This meeting is ordered by the City Council. It's February 6th. I'd ask Councilman Perks to lead us in the Pledge of Legions if you'd like to join us.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Everyone is present, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any corrections to that agenda before we move on? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's been prepared.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion on the agenda? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We've got the City Council minutes for January 16th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as they're prepared and go to the work session minutes for January 23rd. Same thing there. Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, we will acknowledge those as well and move on to the bills. Warrant register with today's date on it?
I do have one question.
Okay.
I thought we always went into partnership with the state of Wyoming on road salt, and this shows that we bought a bunch of salt from Gladiator. What is that? I've never noticed that before.
We've not had any agreement with White Rock for a while. That was all said, we're talking about the straight salt base. We get it from Gladiators, just delivering people work.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers? Mr. Lynch, seconding. Is that what I heard? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Revenue and expenditure report for November. Questions, concerns regarding that? There's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? There's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there opposed? That's approved as well. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing tonight there.
Mr. Lynch?
Nothing tonight. Nice to see a lot of people here, though. It's good.
Mr. Perks?
I will second that. It is good to see people that are interested in what's going on in their city, so it's good to see you here.
Mr. Welling?
I have nothing.
Mr. Sellers?
Couple of quick things. I just want to congratulate the girls at the high school, the classics, and the cheer team for the great job they did at State. It's nice to see them on the, I think it brings a little pride to all of us. I was talking to Rocco before the meeting about Jump Start. Says it's never too late to go, so it's a great program. And if you are starting a business or you want some refreshers on classes, it's at the Roundhouse at 6:00. It's a great opportunity, and they do such a really, really good job. I haven't gone this year, but I've been up to all the other years, and it's an amazing education. And then, thirdly, I just want to remember, people are struggling, things are getting tough. I think everybody's feeling a little pressure. And remember, the number for help of any sort is 988. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Hegeman?
Yeah, I'd like to prepare, I have a prepared statement in regards to something that's coming before us today, Resolution 2406. And these are my comments on that. The issues brought up by Mr. Harris in the letter emailed to me yesterday at 4:00 p.m. and during our in-person discussion on February 1st, 2024, are in regards to my relationship with Joe Westerman. And Mr. Harris's recommendation, I recuse myself from the vote on Resolution 2406 that is before us tonight. I am a tenant of Mr. Westerman. I hold a partnership in a saloon we are restoring on Front Street. And Mr. Westerman's company submitted a redevelopment plan for the Wyoming State Hospital, which is what the resolution is about, on request of the governor's office last year. Mr. Westerman has nothing to do with the resolution before us. The resolution is the city requesting to enter into negotiations with the state to purchase the Wyoming State Hospital for economic development, as it states in the title of the resolution. The allegations in the letter negate the myriad of processes set in place by the state of Wyoming that clearly outline the procedures that should this matter go forward after tonight, and should the state agree to sell the campus to the city, and should the city accept the terms from the state, and should the city opt to offer it to sale to private developers, it must be offered at auction and open to public bids. All reasons cited by Mr. Harris in the letter and in person are speculative and remote. I can only conclude that an attorney that taught ethics for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities would advise me to recuse myself without grounds, either under direct order or as an attempt to manipulate or deny my vote on this matter. Speculative and remote are not the law. The allegations made in person February 1st and in this letter are so far-reaching that it endangers the votes of everyone that sits on this council, as every one of us could have issues found by some to be speculative and remote regarding any matter that has come or will come before us. This is not a precedent that should be set, as it will easily fall under scrutiny of a review board, along with all our previous votes and decisions. It is why the statute is clearly written, to protect the people from abuse of power and protect elected officials from abuse from that same power. I will not be intimidated nor harassed while doing my job by anyone. I will not let speculation and perception be of any influence in my decision-making. Speculation and perception are not the law. I will not let speculations and perceptions silence my vote for silencing my voice as silencing the voice of the people of this community which I represent. 913-106, which is the statute that is cited in the letter multiple times, it clearly states, "The person or private interest in a matter shall recognize the importance of his or her right to represent his or her constituency and shall abstain from voting only in clear cases of personal and private interest as defined in the subsection." And the subsection reads, "is with respect to the public official, public employee, or public member, an interest which is direct and immediate or opposed to speculative and
Thank you. I have nothing to add as far as comments go tonight. Along with Mr. Sellers, I congratulate our students, our cheer and dance teams. I have a couple of daughters that were on both of those teams, and I know the commitment that they make to those competitions, and I know the commitment their parents make to those competitions. So I think that's a valid recognition for them. We'll go on to our public hearings and special orders, and we've got a fairly lengthy list there for reappointments, as it typically happens this time of year. What is your pleasure? You want to visit about some of these individually or collectively? What would you like to do?
I have questions on one.
Okay.
And it's just on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The others, you're fine.
Shall we do the Planning and Zoning Commission first, then?
Sure.
Is that okay with you guys down here? Okay. In our Planning and Zoning Commission, we have four up for reappointment. And I guess I'll just mention all four, and then you can express your interest or your concerns. So I will bring forth the names of Merrill Thompson, Tim Ridenhour, Kim Begala, and Josh Raznick, all to be reappointed to three-year terms ending January 2027. If there's someone that'd like to make a motion of that effect, then we can discuss it?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Perks?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch already beat you to it down here.
Okay, that's fine.
Discussion.
So mildly concerned is we've had a few community members and a couple from the Planning Commission questioning whether Kim still lives in town. I don't know if she has a house in part of the city, and I don't know if that affects that at all. Or not. I don't know if that's to be the truth. I don't know if her neighbors have seen her come and go, but I don't know.
It's like Bruce waiting all over again.
Mr. Mayor?
It would, only on the appointment of that position for the Board of Adjustment. The Planning Commission has a Planning Commission function and also part of its members' function on the Board of Adjustment. And I don't know about Ms. Begala. I don't know what she serves.
It's just, you know, I haven't been to it, but that was a concern raised to me, and I just had to bring that up, so.
Appreciate that.
Other than that...
Is there some sort of requirement to where they have to live within the city limits to be on that Planning and Zoning?
Mr. Mayor? Please. Councilmember Lynch? Yes, for the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Not for the Planning Commission.
Not for the Planning. Okay.
Any further discussion on our Planning and Zoning Commission?
I have a question.
Please.
I don't remember the name of the gentleman that was involved in the Dominion case that many people came to me that was in a conflict of interest. Is he on here?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
I can't remember the name, that's why I'm asking.
It's Tim.
It's Tim. So he had a direct conflict of interest and didn't recuse himself from the vote, as my understanding went?
Is that, if that's your understanding, is that your comment?
That's my comment.
We're going to move forward here.
Yeah, and so I want to know if that's, shall we hold that till we investigate so we can validate that? But it was my understanding underneath the Dominion, when we were talking about that, that that was the biggest issue, that he had a direct conflict of interest and did not recuse himself on the vote and was the deciding vote on that matter.
Well, that was a vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was called up to this council, where it was decided on what it was. I don't know if Mr. Ridenhour's position on that, on the Planning and Zoning Commission affected my vote or your vote on this council, but that, I mean, you're certainly authorized to vote any way that you feel the need here.
Have we had any other interests of people wanting to be on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
I appreciate them serving. That was just a question asked me, and I know Kim's been on there a while, and that's fine. I just had to bring that question up, so.
Any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, all in favor of these individuals being reappointed, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to hold on Tim.
I haven't voted, I haven't asked for a nay vote. If you want to vote nay, I'll give you the...
Are you voting on the group or...
What would you like to do? You want to vote as a group, you want to vote individually?
Individually.
We've got a motion on all four of them and a second on all four of them. If you want to remove, who made that motion?
Doesn't say we have to finish that motion before we...
Yeah, so if you want to deny that motion, can we do that? Start over and just do them all individually? What's the best way to do that?
You can divide the motion on an individual candidate.
Okay, let's divide the motion and on individuals. So we'll just go at the top of the list. I'll bring forth the name of Merrill Thompson to be reappointed again to a three-year term ending January 2027, if somebody'd like to make a motion of that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mr. Ridenhour and Mr. Tim Ridenhour also to a three-year term to be due in January 2027, if somebody'd like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second that.
Mr. Perks, seconding.
Does Tim live in town?
Nope.
I don't believe so.
I think he does.
Yeah.
Lives in Almy.
No, he does not. He's not on the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, as I said, he built a house in Almy, so he would be out of town.
He's on the commission, he's on the Planning Commission without the Board of Adjustment.
Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Hegeman, voting nay. Okay, that is approved as well. Ms. Begala, to a three-year term, January ending, January 2027, if someone'd like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second.
Sellers, seconding. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Me.
Mr. Welling? And Mr. Raznick?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling, make a motion. Mr. Raznick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now, do you want to address these other items together, or you want to visit with them separately as well?
I don't see any issue. I think we can together, lump them together.
Well, I'll just say here, I'll bring forth the names for appointment on the Historic Preservation Commission of Joan Nixon, to be reappointed to a three-year term ending January 2027, and Debbie Lickte, to also be reappointed to a three-year term ending January 2027. And on our Lodging Tax Board, Rocco O'Neill, be reappointed through a three-year term, also ending January 2027, and Lisa Sanborn, to be the same thing, reappointed to a three-year term ending January 2027. If someone'd like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, making the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Those are appointed as well. We appreciate all of these individuals and their willingness to help us on these various commissions. Thank you. We have no consent agenda nor unfinished business, so we'll go to new business. And we have here first a motion to declare property as excess or surplus property, authorizing disposition at, by public auction.
We just have several pieces of equipment or vehicles that have been stacking up that we need to get rid of, so we are going to do the public auction with sealed bids on March 13th for just those vehicles. We will probably have another surplus sale later in the summer for all the other smaller items that we need to get rid of.
It's probably not appropriate for me to try to put my name on the Willys Jeep.
Probably not. But you could come bid on it.
Guess I could bid. I don't know if I've ever even seen that Jeep. That'd be kind of a fun little project, I'll bet.
We've had it a long time.
Is there a place, all of you go and look at these, or is it just...
It's out at the old recycling building, which is 61 Allegiant Circle. And they can look at them the day of the bid, which is Wednesday, March 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Does that 54 Willys Jeep run? Because I might need to go throw a bid in on that one, too.
Hey, we got a big war.
I don't really know.
Since I know... Kim, where'd you find this Jeep? In the back.
It's quiet. It turns on.
Turns on, or it turns over.
Well, is there a motion to declare this property as excess?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved, thanks, Trudy. Now, we need a motion to set a public hearing for March 5th, 2024, at 5:30, to consider the sale of property described as Lot 3, Block 1 of the Union Center Third Edition to Peak Ventures LLC. Rocco? What are we doing here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rocco O'Neill, City of Evanston Community Development Department. This is just simply to set the public hearing date on March 5th. It allows us to advertise over the next three weeks that public hearing. At that hearing, we'll describe the project, the company that's proposing to purchase it from us and relocate their manufacturing here.
Excellent. Is there, may I entertain a motion to set this public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved, thanks. Resolution 2406. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 2406, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, to engage the state of Wyoming in obtaining a transfer of real property and improvements comprising a portion of the Wyoming State Hospital for economic development. This resolution requires introduction and a motion to pass.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lynch, I suspect you're the...
I would like to introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Discussion.
I have something else to say.
Okay.
I have no conflict of interest regarding Resolution 2406. I stand to benefit no more than any resident of Evanston or Euenta County. Statute 913-106, which is referred to in a letter emailed to me on 4:00 p.m. yesterday, directs I am in violation of this statute. I am not. I have consulted with my legal counsel on this matter, and not only am I not in violation, the statute clearly states, quote, "an interest which is direct and immediate as opposed to speculative and remote," unquote, and recognizes the importance of a public official's right to represent their constituency and shall abstain from voting only in clear cases of personal and private financial interests as defined by the statute, of which I have zero.
I'll just throw this out there. I do, as far as discussion goes, I do have some concerns with this resolution. And quite honestly, it stems back several years ago when we first were approached with this prospect. I think the opportunities are interesting with regard to the state hospital, but what I also see is that this poses a great liability to the community. The state hospital is not the Roundhouse, and it is not the machine shop. And it poses a pretty strong liability to the community. That's a concern for me. One question that I have, and I don't know the answer to, Ms. Lynch, maybe you do, Mr. Harris, maybe you can, maybe Mr. O'Neill can help us. When we're talking about, if we were talking about the receiving of these buildings, of the buildings of the state hospital, does that include the real property on which the buildings are built? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
So the purpose of this resolution is to engage the state and to engage them about the buildings and the real property, so it would be as a whole. So it would be the opportunity for us as a city to enter in an agreement with the Wyoming State to acquire, convey these buildings and this land. In return, what we would like to do is use them for economic development, according to this resolution. So this resolution is basically just for the City of Evanston to engage with the state so that we can get back to that possibility of them giving us that land and those buildings. Then in return, we would be able to use those buildings and that land for economic development. As of right now, the reason I've asked Mr. Harris to present this resolution, right now we're setting, they're going to use taxpayer dollars, and I've heard all kinds of numbers, anywhere from $30 million to $80 million, all kinds of numbers. In this situation, if we can save the state that amount of money in demolition, if we can take it as a city and turn around and sell that real property for a profit, that in regard would save the state money, that would allow the city to make some money, but at the end goal is hopefully going to add us some economic development through these buildings. I think a lot of people have been misled about what these buildings are and the condition of these buildings. If anybody's seen the Myers-Anderson report, it's rather lengthy. It kind of details three different avenues. The avenue that I'm describing would be private investment. So if you go ahead and read into the Myers-Anderson report, "development prospective, private ownership with supportable business model. Privatization of the redevelopment project could afford numerous advantages to the state of Wyoming, City of Evanston, the local economy, and the community at large." So this was one of the processes detailed in the Myers-Anderson report, where we could use this, you know, if the city had it, and then go ahead and use it through private development to use it for numerous different things. The, kind of the whole process that, and narrative on these buildings, that they are terrible, they need to be tore down, they are awful, I think that narrative has been spun, but it's been spun incorrectly. There are six buildings in this Myers-Anderson report that are detailed for demolition. But then if you go to the next page, you've also got Building 2, 12, 14, 17, 18, 19, the detailed light renovation. You got the opportunity to almost turnkey six of these buildings. If anybody can imagine the ability to turnkey these six buildings for economic development, no matter what it might be, whether it be housing, whether it be for commercial, whether it be for whatever it is, the opportunity is there. But everybody has been focusing on the fact that there's six of those buildings that need demolished. Well, yeah, six out of 21. Even if we were to turn around six of those buildings, can you imagine what that would do for our community? When we talk about public housing, every time we talk about it, we're full and we have a 10-person waiting list for public housing. That's just one opportunity. There's also a building up there that's got a gym in it. Our kids are just clamoring for gym space. The school district came in and said, hey, let's build a $32 million filled house, when we've got a gym and a climbing wall sitting right up there. So I just, I think it's been wrongfully looked at as it needs to be demolished, it needs to be tore down, when to rebuild these buildings and the structures and the materials and everything's used would be four, five, 10 times what it would be to just renovate them. So I just think it would be a disservice to the state taxpayers for the amount of money that they are going to lose in demolition. I think it'd be a disservice to the city and the opportunity to make money, and not to mention create a tax base, which it talks about in this Myers-Anderson report as well, if I can find the earmark. We talk about, "Private sector can likely carry the majority of the funding and finance re-equipment for the project, given the right industry company as partner and key investment by the public sector in stabilization and contribution of property assets..." by the public sector in stabilization and contribution of property assets commensurate with private commitments. Economic development benchmarks. State of Wyoming may consider conveyance of the land." All of it's detailed in this, in this report. It was back in 2021, and it was like nobody read it. So, it, I think this is an opportunity for the city to really reengage in this and use this land and these buildings as redevelopment. As to the letter, I would like to also address, too, we got a letter that I believe, in my opinion, I just feel like it's going to open us up for the wrong situation. I think we're talking about the city talking with the state. And I don't appreciate the letter sent to Ms. Hegeman, almost threatening, when I don't believe she's got any interest. We're not even talking about selling it to anybody at this moment right now. It would have to go out for bid, it would have to go out for auction, it would be available to anyone. We're not talking, we're not even talking about it being purchased. So, when we talk about speculative, you open this door for speculative, you're opening a door for every single one of us sitting on this council that you could try and connect this dot, that dot, that dot, and somehow get us in trouble. So, I think with that letter, that also opens up a door that we don't want to open. And I don't think she has anything to do with this resolution that I'm bringing forward to the council. So, I would like to speak to that as well. Hopefully, I've covered everything I think I can cover when it comes to these, but I think, I think this is a great opportunity for the City of Evanston, and I think we need to really take a look at it and engage with the state again, because I think we're missing out, and I don't want to, I don't want to see us miss out.
Appreciate that.
Senator, I've got a couple of questions. Do we know where, we've sent a letter to ask them to delay the destruction. Have we ever heard back where that is? John, do you know?
Yeah, you're the legislator here, and you guys make those decisions, not the city, on the destruction. We don't make the decision whether we're going to tear it down or not. That's not our call.
It's the legislator's call.
Mayor?
Please, Delus.
Members of the council, Mr. Welling. Right now, that letter has been received. It did go to the State Building Commission. At this point, as we speak today, there are two buildings slated for demolition this year at the value of $3.429 million. Within those two demolitions, there's also the construction, or more importantly, the purchase and erection of a prefabricated steel building, which right now is designed for the transitionary components of such a destruction or demolition to take any assets that could be inventoried and displaced throughout the state and the other area. So, as we speak today, the state has heard us, they understand that. That's why, at this point, there's only two buildings, the two storage buildings specifically, that have been slated for destruction and demolition this year with the erection of, again, that prefabricated steel building. To Mr. Lynn's point, if I can, the resolution, as I understand it, is specifically to reach out and, more importantly, to communicate with the state there's renewed interest, there's renewed people, and there's renewed plan that we'd like to engage with them to ensure that we could further stop future demolitions. And the value right now, as I mentioned before, there's been $3.4 million allocated this year spending that has to be approved next week in the budget session. The likelihood that that does pass is pretty high, because it's within the budget package itself. There has been $15 million placed in revision for future at this point, but the values, as Mr. Lynn has pointed out, have unbelievably escalated exponentially to where they're unfathomable as it relates to 71 million, at least the value I heard. So, as we speak today, to your question to get back to that, the state has heard us, the state's waiting to see what we want to do. All this is, to my understanding from the resolution, is specifically asking the state, can we undertake, can we undertake a conversation to see what the fair market value is of the land? As we know now, those buildings would be demolished, so there should be no monetary assessed value to those buildings. So, right now, the resolution is to engage with the state to say, you know what, we are interested in understanding how much money, fair market value, it would cost the City of Evanston to purchase those buildings.
So, I've been following the town of Jackson in Teton County, and they've got a piece of ground up there that they're wanting, and the state's saying, great, give us a million dollars, it's yours.
The largest difference, Mr. Williams, or Welling, sorry, that's Jackson.
Well, I know, but they want it for housing, and they want it for a special purpose, and the state's not conveying it to them, and I don't know that we have the money in our budget to buy the state hospital grounds and building.
And that's a great, yeah, no, that's a great, and it's a great point. But right now, I can't answer your question, because we don't know what the state is going to assess the value at. If it's $10 an acre, again, the Constitution said it has to be at fair market value. Hypothetically, if it's $10, that's $1,180. If it's $100, you just add another zero. So, the value of the resolution is to understand, does the state want $1,000 bucks, or do they want $100 million? And that carries with it the next part of the step or the process, is to say, you know what, if it's worth X, can the city in turn buy it and then immediately turn it around to private investors based on RFPs? So, I can't answer your question, unfortunately, at this point. But the opportunity we have, to Mr. Lynn's point, is to figure out if the state would value it and then tell us what that value is. I've spoken to many legislators. That is the most viable path to understand.
So, my understanding, so it's clear, they don't convey property to other entities. We have to buy it, is what you're saying?
That's based on the Constitution.
Yeah.
You know, that transfer land has to be based on fair market value.
Okay.
So, unfortunately, and the ability, if you look at history, the past precedents in terms of the state selling land to private entities, it is the likelihood of us winning the lottery. It's very remote.
Right. Thank you. That's all I have to ask.
And I've got a question, and I appreciate Mr. Lynn's explanation for this, for this resolution. If, maybe this is a question for Mr. Harris, if we were to pursue this and the state said, no, the property is not, the real estate, the ground is not included in these buildings, then that would, in essence, negate this resolution, would it not, or would it?
Mr. Mayor, I think, as Mr. Lynn pointed out, it's to approach the state about transfer of the land and the building.
And the building, yeah.
Anything that would go to the point of, of, you know, offer to do that would have to come back to the council. This authorizes the city to express an interest in that transfer. But anything you did to accept, purchase, lease, would have to come back to the council for action.
Okay. You know, and I just throw this out there so that, so that everyone knows where I stand. Maybe you already do. But, again, the concerning part for me here is, is that I know how difficult it is for the government to sell property, I know how difficult it is for the city to sell property. We are not, as a community, we are not good landlords, and that's not an effective place for the government to be in. And I see this as, as a, as a, now, whether the buildings go or stay, to me, is a state decision. I really have no real feelings one way or another. What my concern is, is this is a state issue, and I don't want the city to have to be liable for any part of it, because I think this is a big, big, big price tag attached to these, to these, to these buildings in whatever fashion, if that means renovation or demolition, either one. And so, I appreciate Mr. Lynn's efforts. I think they're great, but I do have concerns, but, but I'm only one vote, and I, and I respect that. So, is there any further discussion on this resolution?
I'd like to ask, one of, I'd like to point out, one of the most turnkey factors of the hospital is, was it was set up for dormitories. And so, it's, it's basically turnkey for housing. And what I found from my friend, the realtor back there, Britt, can you, it was, we are down. Everybody knows Wyoming is in a housing crisis, everybody knows Evanston is in a housing crisis. There's nowhere for people to go, there's nowhere for businesses to come in and put workers, there's nowhere. But you told me, you actually did some research, and it was, what, Britt, how far are we down on the housing market? Which is the most, I mean, I would love to see those turned into, because it's, they were housing.
So, just year to year, last year to this year, 48% down. And it is not because there is a lack of buyers or a lack of renters, there is a lack of inventory. I've included all of the inventory in this packet. There's 26 homes on the market right now. The most affordable and livable home, this loan interest payment on it is going to be $1,200 a month. Who can afford that?
What's the average home price now in Evanston?
It's in your packet. I highlighted everything.
It's 400.
400, I believe, is what it said.
And what's the payment on that?
I didn't calculate the payment on that one, but I calculated some of the lower payments for you guys.
Thank you.
And there's 20, how many are on the market now?
26.
26.
In all price ranges.
In all price, but most of them are in the 400. There's only a couple, and even average mortgage is going to be 1,200 plus.
That's very minimal. If, so that property that's listed right now, it got listed yesterday, there's already two offers on it.
And how many requests do you get for rentals, average?
I'm sorry, this really has nothing to do with this resolution. If you've got something...
It doesn't have anything to do with it. It has everything to do with housing.
Do you have more comments on this particular resolution? Do you have anything more to say on this resolution?
That's what I have to say.
Further, further discussion?
Yeah. This should be in private hands. You know, as a city, we have buildings down here that haven't been completed that I'd like to see get completed. And I don't think we can take on any more historic buildings at this point in time. If we could get this and then immediately pass it on to someone else, that would be ideal, because I don't believe the state will ever get around to selling it either. My biggest concern is we get stuck with it, or we get stuck with some liabilities because of the ground filled asbestos or whatever might be there. And, and in your point, most of us that were on the council at the time, we went to these meetings, and we have seen this report. So, there's a lot of good things in that report, but there's a lot of risk in that report. And I've struggled with this since me and Mr. Lynn talked about it a week ago. This is a tough one. This isn't an easy decision to make, one way or another, for Like I say, if we could get this and send it right out to the private sector, that'd be, that'd be perfect, but I'm not so sure we can without getting stuck with it, so.
So, as to the value of this place, you just spoke, because I'm the new guy. Can someone fill me in on when the state first approached us, how much they wanted for it?
There was never, never a dollar figure discussed.
Because it was, it was under my impression, they were, they were ready to convey that land and property to us. And now that we have the opportunity to save them anywhere from 30 to 90 million, the opportunity probably is even better. So, I don't like the narrative of saying can't, won't, not going to happen. We don't know that until we engage with the state. So, when we engage with the state, we will find out if that's possible.
I don't know that the, that the, that the land itself was ever included in that discussion. I know the buildings were, the land may or may not have been. It was never... So, I understand what you're trying, what this resolution would do. I get it.
We won't know until we, until we try. And as to the housing issue, yes, that is pertinent to this, because that is one possibility in the Myers-Anderson report that talks about possibility of putting housing there. So, thank you, Brittany, for bringing that to our attention, because looking at our market as far as housing goes, could be a possible use for these buildings. And as far as the difficulty of moving state land into private hands, I actually called Kemmer today, because I was aware of a situation that is very similar to what we may be trying to achieve. Like I said, this resolution is just to engage the state. But Kemmer, right now, just transferred a much smaller piece of property that was city-owned to private industry under the operating agreement, without request for proposals, without anything, they just paid proposals to the city, they picked that one, and the only stipulation was there is a revert clause. So, if they don't do what they say they are going to do, that land would revert back to the city. So, there is actual precedent up in Kemmer right now where it just happened. I just talked to their city administrator today, asking questions about it. I have their advertisement that they emailed me today, showing me, it would actually be very, very simple, according to the way they went about it, and they were advised by their attorney that it was more than on the up and up in the way they went about it. So, I don't like some of the misleading type comments that get off the subject a little bit, because I do have evidence, and I have talked to people and know the process, so.
And I don't know how you could just do buildings and not have the land included. And I'm trying to remember back with any discussions, but as a land developer and as someone who looks at land, you always assume that if you're buying a building, it comes with a certain amount of property attached with it. And so, I think if, I think if we can discuss with the state and we can get the right terms, I mean, as Mr. Representative said, we can, if it's $10 an acre, it's one thing, if it's $1 million an acre, it's something else. But we won't know any of those unless we can discuss. And I think we need to be able to discuss.
Any further discussion?
Say all I can say.
There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That's approved.
Thank you.
Comments from departments? See, everybody, Ms. Larson back there, do you have anything for us? Mr. Robinson?
It's National Water and Water Operator Leaks. Shout out all the guys in Galasine to keep the safety of water and services.
Thank you. Yeah?
One of them right there.
Chief Rannish, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Ms. Lynn?
I did hear allow a lane to the public officer's train, for those of you who need to do that, it's a self-help service, so that's your day of the day.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Newsom, anything for us? Thank you. Mr. Donina?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason tonight? Please, Mr. Conrad?
Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the confidence in allowing us to pursue, or more importantly, legislator, to pursue how much money that land is worth and/or where we go to the next steps. The most important comment I have for you is I want to recognize, and more importantly, reinforce what Mr. Sellers stated about suicide awareness and mental health awareness. I will continue, specifically on this legislative session, to produce funding for the 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline. It is with heavy heart that I share with you, we lost a young man in the valley last Monday due to suicide, 13 years old. This is a real epidemic, and the most we can do is to support those first responders, 988 Suicide Prevention, as well as UNT County Suicide Prevention. It's a tragic, tragic illness that we have to get a handle on, and it affects every one of us. It's about being pro-life, not only pre-birth, but post-life. So, I ask you to continue to think about those who are struggling at this time, and prayers to the Kitchell family at this time as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? We'll adjourn.